I'm humbled and hard. Hang on, we're recording the Zoom. Got it, we're good. I am both humbled and excited to serve as your president for this year and I would like to pay a special thank you to all of our guests and visiting Rotarians that are with us today. If you're helping lead milestones, if you would please go ahead and come on up. So Ron, Carolyn, and Lisa, we will go ahead and get things started.
As we continue to experience the environment that we're surrounded by recently, I would simply ask you to bow your heads and join me in a word of prayer. Lord, thank you for this opportunity to, once a week, come together in food, fun, and fellowship and sharing with others how important service is to our community. We lift ourselves up to you and ask for your guidance in helping us to do the right things to help continue to serve God and mankind. I ask your blessing on the food of which we've already partaken and use it to the nourishment of our bodies. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
No, Carolyn's here. So special surprise. No, nice familiar face. Let's give her a round of applause. Our honorary member, Carolyn Hallway from Sun City Club. Welcome Carolyn.
Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge to be to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few milestones today. Birthdays, Glenn Schneider, July 22nd. Spouse birthdays, Tim Harris's spouse Angie, on July 19th. Roger Maron, Vin Katakalam's spouse Guazami, on July 19th. Barry Bowden's spouse Twila, July 20th. Derek McGill's spouse Rosie, July 20th as well. Trace Sutton's spouse Bethany, July 21st. And for anniversaries, we have Chris and Wendy Cash, 29 years, on July 17th. Fred and Terry Brent, 24 years, July 18th. And for club anniversaries, we have Vicky Jackamaic, five years, on July 21st. Salute. Okay, now, for all of you that just sat down but you're visiting us today, we're going to ask you to pop back up. We'd like now to be able to recognize our visiting Rotarians and guests. So if you're joining us today, please go ahead and stand and the person bringing you, stand with them. And Galen's going to come around for introductions.
I'm ahead of the interview, smart handsome. I'm from the Sun City Rotary Club. Nice to meet you. So if you ask me your name, please contact me.
Well, we'll put it in the budget, Sam. We talked about buying a boat at the board meeting, but maybe we'll buy a plane instead. Help get us all to Australia next spring. We'll go to the next slide. Go ahead, move forward. One more for you. Okay, so just a quick update. Just want to say thank you. There's been a tremendous group of past presidents that have been gathering around the tables at the last couple meetings that are helping plan our 60th club anniversary. If you have anything in your archives over the last 10 years that you think is cool of significance, pictures, newspaper articles, memorabilia, fun hats or clothes, please, please, please reach out to Ron or Karen or any past president in our club as we're beginning to get those items collected for lots of festivities to come. We don't hear that very often on this side of town. So, Janie, the Field of Honors started early as I can hear the flyover just took place. So they're practicing for us in November. So please go ahead and get those items over to the committee as soon as possible. Okay, Dennis, quick update from membership, if you don't mind, sir?
Thank you, Kat. Quick update. First of all, the board approved Police Chief Cory to cheetah. So he will be inducted in two weeks and very excited to have him on board. And also Will Williams has completed his red badge requirements and now will get his white badge in two weeks. So all of you red badgers, it can be done. So we hope that you move along. We've been looking at the eight board goals for membership and just quickly on the first goal deals with increasing membership by 150 members over the next three years, maybe more, but at least 150. And so that involves recruitment and involves retention. And I'll be talking a little bit more about that in two weeks when I give my update. So you get a sense of what that includes. If you're a guest today, we have several, and you're interested in membership in the Georgetown Rotary Club, please see me after the meeting today. I'll be glad to provide some information to you. And then I wanted to do one final thing each week. It's kind of the words of the day. And so for today, I know I've heard this before, so I couldn't find the author, but I'm giving that tribute to anyone, but it did come from somewhere. Words to live by, truth and honesty. Learn it from the past, live it today, and be better for it tomorrow. Have a great day.
Okay, next slide. All right, Galen, we got a big crowd. We already got your step count going because the guest did a good job of spreading out. Let's see how busy they can keep you.
Okay, we're here to maybe contribute something to Polio Plus. And of course, we only like to do that if you're happy. You have something to tell us about or whine about. It's not restricted just to that. So anybody feeling happy today? Ah, Roger. So it's been a while since I've brought guests. So I figured today, I brought two guests. It'll be $10 a page, but it's $20 a price. Anybody else happy when this says seven? Yes, ma'am.
If it's in my face. Come on, Dennis. Come on, Dennis.
He's grumpy over here. Sometimes doing things for somebody else that are completely unexpected go without appreciation. But someone, a member in this club, and she will remain nameless, stepped into my world in the middle of this week when I was in a just a frenzy of business catastrophes, basically, and took on a task that I just didn't want to do or have the time to do. She came through with flying colors for me and I just was reminded how much I appreciate that kind of support and services. But thank you very much. And I'll do $20 for that.
I've got, I've got one. This is no, not a joke. I've got happy dollars. Okay, so you can take this to Wayne, anybody that wants to, all right? So Cory Kane, he's been here for four meetings, right? He already beat Chief Nero's count for two years, right? So I've got, I've got $10 for our new police chief and our chief, our fire chief for joining our Rotary Club in the last two weeks and really jumping all in. So, no, it's $10 for each one time. There we go. Come on, it's, you know, it's, for those of you that are visiting guests, all of our happy bucks go to Polio Plus. Polio is what we are going to eradicate as a movement. So excited about that. Nice, good, funky right there. That was perfect.
Give us a little lemonade today.
So you all know this week is on Friday week this week, but I have a lot of Amazon people have a mother and a white noise machine. So do you know what two monkeys who are sharing an Amazon account are called? Primates.
Does anybody else have something to celebrate? Does anybody need to buy a new house?
Jeff's got one. He's got one back there. Last one. $20 for his mom. Thank you, Galen. Happy to do today. Did all right? Thank you, sir. All right, next up. Okay, the man of the hour. Thank you, everybody who's come to visit this. It's my esteemed, it's my privilege to introduce you to our president nominee. He's getting the hang of all the programs, but he's also taken on a very exciting role for us as chairing our human trafficking initiative, which, for those of you that don't know, is a partnership and collaboration of all of the Rotary Clubs coming together here in Georgetown. So we're very excited about unification of Rotary across our great city as well as our terrific club. Roger did a lot of work with us last year and he is going to be bringing us some updates and some things on what we can do. So if you would please give me a Georgetown Rotary welcome to our president nominee, Roger Chappell.
Thanks, everybody. Wanted to, first of all, thank you all for being here today. This is a very important topic. And everybody that I talk to across the board always has some additional information for me that I hadn't seen, hadn't heard of, or anything like that. And mind you, my background in law enforcement, I've heard and seen a lot, I mean, a whole lot. So with all of that, I guess I need to move this up. One moment, I've got to work this out here.
It's a hype thing, guys. Come on now. You let a short person, there you go. However you want it. That should be good.
How's that? Is that a little bit better? All right. So with my background in law enforcement, I don't claim to know everything there is to know about human trafficking far from it, but I do have a very, very good idea. And as you'll see, we do have a slide presentation, right? But who can tell me what is human trafficking? Anyone? Anyone have any ideas at all? I'm not just going to stand up here and speak. I want a lot of participation here because this is that important. So somebody give me a definition of human trafficking. Yes, sir? Okay, that's one. I'm sorry? Exactly. What else? Yes, sir. Buying and selling human lives. Slave labor, is that? Yes, ma'am. Exactly, indentured. So y'all can tell with all of these words that we're hearing, have we heard this stuff before? We have. We absolutely have. If you go to the next slide, please. Human trafficking today, by today's definitions, involves so many different aspects. But what I'm concentrating on and what I think our club needs to concentrate on is the human trafficking of these young boys and girls. And let's be honest, we're not talking about slave labor here. What we are talking about is sex trafficking. So just about everything that you hear me talk about today is in relation to exactly that. We're not talking about kids in China and other places that are putting our clothes together and working in sweatshops and all that. Although that is part of human trafficking, that is not what we're talking about today. So we look at some different examples of human trafficking that has affected us, human trafficking that has affected us here in the Georgetown area. One of them, of course, is, I think it was a week and a half ago, there were two young girls, 15 years old. I remember an amber alert went out on them from Garland, Texas. And they found them here, not just in Williamson County, but here in Georgetown. And they were found with a gentleman, and I'm calling him a gentleman because I'm being as nice as I can possibly be right now. I don't know what his relationship is with these two young ladies. Have no clue whatsoever. I'm sure that the DA's office knows because he was eventually charged with harboring a runaway. That's just one charge. Now, I don't know the facts of that case at all, but it seems strange to me that we've got a guy here in Williamson County that has in his custody two young juveniles, 15 years of age, as runaways from Garland, Texas. So my first thought was, of course, I'm an investigator. I always go back to, okay, let's ask the right questions. Let's find out what's going on here. And I can guarantee you, that's exactly what's happened here. There's been an investigation, there's a continuing investigation between not just Williamson County, but up there in Garland, Texas as well. So hopefully they'll get to the bottom of that and figure out exactly what's going on there. But that is just a minor incident. What is another incident that brought to mind was the 53 people that died in the trailer that was found right outside of San Antonio, Texas. If you think about it, I-35 is a major corridor from South Texas all the way, I drove it all the way up until it dead ended up in, well, from, from my perspective, it actually was in, I think Nebraska or someplace where we actually feared off. So at any rate, that's a very long corridor, just that main part of I-35, okay? That, and you got to figure, we're right in the center of the United States. And us being in the center of Texas, we're in a hub of where these kids can go once they make it this far north. So it's incredible to me where we're at right here. Georgetown covers 11 or 12 miles of I-35. So to me, our club, I think, needs to do what we can to try to protect that 11 mile stretch, not just that 11 mile stretch of highway. It's what's happening on that highway in relation to these kids, if there's a way that we can do this. And I believe, I've got a couple of solutions, and I'm hoping to get some help from you all for the other part of it. Illegal immigration is yet another arm of this human trafficking. We hear it and see it on the news every single day. When you turn on the news, what's the first thing we hear about? The borders are wide open. People are coming across. We've got coyotes bringing people across the border illegally all the time. And on occasion, you'll hear that some of these young kids that are being brought across have been sexually assaulted or the ladies, even young boys are being sexually assaulted on these trips on the way up here. And that is their way of paying for their trip to get into the United States. That's only one way. Once they get here, and I have seen this myself on multiple occasions in Houston, once they get here, these coyotes take these folks to these various places all over the state. And they hold them up in these particular apartments or housing, someplace like that. And these folks aren't allowed to leave until additional money is paid to these coyotes. So the coyotes will hold these people hostage until additional money is brought over. What do you think's happening to the majority of these hostages? They're being sexually abused, especially if they're young kids. That's just a fact. So the next slide, please. So when we take a look at who does this truly affect and how does it affect us in Rotary? So that's the next two phases of where we're headed here next. First of all, it affects our families. How does it affect our families? Because our kids and our grandkids know other kids who are having struggles at home or who have been in contact with somebody that they probably shouldn't have been. And there's conversations taking place that we as parents and grandparents do not know about. I'm telling you, we don't know who they're talking with, even though we have control of their devices. We really do not know who they're talking with. I promise you that. There's too many other ways that they can communicate without us knowing about it. It's ridiculously insane. So that's one thing. Of course, I already mentioned the families. Our workforce, our workforce is negatively impacted in a number of different ways. A lot of these folks, when they do come over, whether legally or illegally, they're coming across to get better jobs and flee from where they were at. They want a better lifestyle. That's why they're coming here. So we can leave the politics out of that whole thing. Just take a look at why we have immigration to begin with. When you have this kind of stuff going on, though, it negatively impacts the workforce because these folks have been so mistreated, so malnourished, they've been sexually assaulted, they've had all of this balance practiced against them. Are they ever truly released? Do they ever really get the relief? No, they don't. Why not? Because now they're having to deal with some sort of mental trauma. And are they getting treatment for that mental trauma? No. Why not? We don't have a system in place to take care of that. We just don't. So does it impact the workforce? Absolutely. They can't go to work. And if they do, they're going to hold down menial jobs. They're really not going to be making it any better than what they were in their own, their own homes. So that's just another aspect of it. The legal system. How does it impact our legal system? Well, unfortunately, because the way these kids communicate, investigating these kinds of cases is extremely complex. It's very difficult. It's hard to prove who's actually sitting behind the computer that's actually communicating with these kids. It's hard to prove who's actually doing the communicating with them. Even though we all have our own devices, these device, these handheld devices, our cell phones, our tablets, our computers, they are all unique to each one of us. It's just like your fingerprint. None of us in here have the same fingerprints. And we can take our cell phones and none of us in here have the same usage of our cell phones. None of us. It's very unique to each one of us. So with that said, in the legal system, it's extremely complicated to be able to investigate these crimes and be able to tie somebody to these, these specific illegal acts. It can be done, but it is still very, very difficult. So be patient when you do hear about that. A lot of times, we'll find out if somebody's been charged with harboring a runaway. We'll find out later on that they're going to be charged with aggravated assault or aggravated sexual assault of a minor and all these other horrendous crimes against these children. So, and I'm not saying, because I don't know about this gentleman here in Williamson County, I don't want to say that he did that. I really don't know. I don't know the facts of that case. But I mean, it just stands to reason that that is a possibility. And not just in that case, but in others. Next slide, please. So what can we do about it as Rotarians? Well, first of all, when Beverly was the governor, she made this one of her priorities. So I got a phone call in the very beginning of this thing, hey, this is what we're trying to do. We don't really know what direction we're going yet. So basically for a year, I kind of fumbled along, not really knowing anything about what our true goals were and what we were going to do. Until a couple of weeks ago, Karen Wilson invited me to the Sun City Rotary for their luncheon and I met with those folks and spoke to them about this exact issue. And lo and behold, if it's not, now there's a lot of clubs around our area that are starting to take action and doing some things about this. So as Rotarians, there's a number of things that we can do. First of all, the victims' awareness programs. So if you go to the next slide, I think that, yeah, this trailer was brought to us during our assembly last year. I forget when that was even held. The district, Galen, that's correct. So this gentleman drove this truck and trailer from Colorado. It's, it's the only vehicle like it that I have ever seen. He travels around from Rotary Club to Rotary Club. And this gentleman is getting up close to 80 years old now, and he can't do this anymore. But going through this trailer, I sat out there for two days with this thing and I was shocked. Nathan was out there with me for some of that period as well. We saw some people go through there. And the way this trailer is set up is that there's three different stations. Unfortunately, he has some equipment problems, so we can only use one station. But to see how these kids are targeted and was amazing to me. I mean, I don't, how many of y'all got a chance to go through that trailer? So less than a third of, less than a quarter of us had a chance to go through that trailer. So there's three separate stations and each one of them have a TV setup with some video and they have these kids talking about some of the experiences that they have gone through. So to hear these kids, and mind you, these kids were not victims themselves, they were actors playing the victim, if that makes sense. So they were telling true stories. One of the girls was an actual victim. Only one. And with them telling their story, I mean, I was shocked to hear this. I've got a 10-year-old granddaughter and as soon as I started hearing all this, I made that gum sure that I sent all this information to my oldest son. One of the other things I did is I stood out in front of that trailer and I took a selfie. And if y'all know me, I'm not the selfie guy. That's not me. But I did on this one. And immediately when I posted it, I got a phone call from a friend of mine in Houston who's actually running the Houston Police Department's Human Trafficking Initiative. And he's like, how do we get this truck? So that got me to thinking, what can we do as Rotarians to be able to get the word out? One of the biggest obstacles that we found was like the schools. And this isn't an affront to Georgetown ISD. This is actually a state law that's gone around. In the past, the parents used to have to opt out to have their children be a part of something like this. That is no longer the case. Now the parents have to opt in. So it's definitely changed. What that's also done too is that for programs like this, it's very difficult for us to be able to get to the schools and explain to them what we're trying to do. Because the first thought that goes through their mind is, I don't want my child being exposed to this kind of stuff. Well, guess what? Their children are already exposed to it. They just don't know it. So what we have to do is, it's a pretty high bar that we've already got set for us. How do we, how do we help? What can we do? My, my suggestion is, is we need one of those trucks. We need the truck, we need the trailer, we need to get the information out there, and we need to show up at these different locations where these kids are going to be. And we need them to come in and see this. I saw how powerful that was on a Saturday when the truck was here. There was a couple that came through. They were Rotarians and I forget where they were from. I want to say Colleen. But they came through the trailer, they saw what this thing had to offer. They left and the next day, they brought their kids in. That is a message. That was powerful. To see these kids and their reactions when they saw these stories and to listen to them have their conversation as they walked away, I don't know what the conversation, I mean, I didn't pay attention to it, but I know they were talking. That's what needs to happen. So that couple at least was able to get their children in to see this. Now, one of the thing, one of the many things about this that fascinates me is the number of apps. I mean, we all have apps on our cell phone to do every kind of thing you can imagine. I mean, they usually make our lives quite easier. We can shop online with them. We can calculate various things we're trying to do and all that. Okay, so that's great. But there's also all these communication apps. And in these communication apps, there are many of them that are designed to target children, not adults. They can also, they're encrypted so that these kids can actually make these messages disappear. And the kids know those devices much better than any of us in this room. I can guarantee it. I can guarantee it. So how are these folks being targeted? It's very simple. It's very subtle and it takes time. And they're targeting kids that you might not think are in trouble. And you'd be surprised, the number of kids that run away that wind up in this human trafficking thing that really weren't troubled kids at all. But especially kids that are between the ages of 12 and say 14, that is the prime age right there, 12 to 14 years of age. And the reason being is their minds are so easily influenced. It's so easy to communicate with them and just give some sort of a subtle message. And the kids don't realize that they're being lured. They have no idea. And then the next thing you know, they're being asked to send photos of themselves. And in today's society, kids are sending Snapchat and selfies and all, I mean, they're doing all that kind of stuff. They're sending back and forth all the time. They do it all the time. So for them, it's just natural. Now, all of a sudden, this predator has asked for a nude selfie. And these kids, because they've been in communication and this, this person that they've never met is telling them what a beautiful soul they are, what a beautiful person they are. And they're hearing things from these other predators that they don't get to hear from their own local people, then that's how they're lured in. And that's just one of hundreds of ways. And there are so many apps out there that, I know the gentleman that was doing this in the beginning, he said when he first started he said when he first started, there were only about eight apps. By the time he finished his first round, I think he said he had like ten different locations in a period of about three months. By the time he finished that, he now had over twenty different apps that he was aware of that were, these kids were using and were being targeted by these predators. So to me, that's where we can be a big benefit. So I was, uh, drafted as being the, uh, the chairperson for the Human Trafficking Initiative. With that said, I need some members to come and join me. That's one of the reasons I'm up here today. And I don't need people who are just gonna say, yeah, I'm, I'm interested, I'm interested. No, I don't wanna hear I'm interested. I wanna hear I'm interested, I'm joining, and what can I do to help? That's what I want to hear. When I went and spoke to the Sun City Club recently, I met Mr. Smith. Uh, and of course, he has been gracious enough and, and talked to us a couple of times here about Tangled Flight, which I still love, that is an awesome program. Uh, but he's also mentioned to me about ways that we can possibly get a truck and a trailer to make this happen. My idea was to get this truck and trailer and keep it within our district and be able to affect as many people as we possibly can within our district. But of course, there's other costs to get involved and all of that. So there, there's gonna have to be some sort of a grant put together and we're gonna need club collaboration. So my committee is not gonna be one where we're just kind of passively talking about ideas. We're gonna be active in putting things together and making something happen. So with that, that's all I've got, but I'd love to answer any questions that you all may have. Yes, Karen? I'm sorry, hang on a second. I'm hard of hearing, so forgive me.
And it helps the Zoom ones? So Karen is vacationing with the man that owns that truck. The chief has shown the picture of the logo and trailer. There's a possibility he wants to sell it. And we're hoping to be first in line if that's the case. I don't know how much money you're talking about, but that could be a possibility if you wanna think about that.
We would love to do that. And you know, it's, it's the truck and the trailer and then of course, it doesn't have to be designed specifically after what, uh, this gentleman had. Uh, and forgive me, I forgot his name, I think it's Jim. Could you, yeah, so, uh, with that, uh, yeah, I think that, that's a great idea. And you know, we gotta figure, the costs that are involved with that are not just the purchase of the truck, but we have to have insurance for it. Who's gonna drive it? Um, where's it gonna be stored? What about the wrap that goes around it to be able to advertise? Because I love that. Can you put that picture back up? I love that right there. That is awesome to me. We don't have to do something exactly like that, but that's a statement piece right there. When that truck pulled up, I was in awe. That thing was huge. There's only a few places where we can park it. Uh, and we got lucky that the bank right there, I think it was the First Texas Bank, uh, right there at the corner of Rivery and, uh, yes, uh, allowed us to park it there. So that was great. It was right across the street from the hotel where we have the Rotarians go through it. So, uh, it was pretty interesting. Yes, sir?
So whatever you're saying is we have a lot of these kids that they're targeted, uh, uh, in situations, bad situations where they're living. Uh, do you think if they had a mentor at school would help this situation?
No, you're missing, misunderstanding, maybe I'm not making myself clear on that. This isn't just troubled kids. These are your average, normal, everyday teenagers or pre-teens that already have what's going on in their teenage mind or their pre-teen mind. And these predators target that. And it takes these kids away from, I mean, these are kids that, like, these girls in Garland, they weren't troubled kids. They ran away. Why did they run away? So when we start looking deeper into it, it's not always kids that are coming from troubled homes or anything like that. No, absolutely not. It can be anyone.
That's District Governor Jay Davenport is online and he said Roger, there is a group, a Rotary group out of Minnesota that is doing a lot of trafficking work and we ought to contact him and, um, worry from what they're already doing.
Excellent. If you would, can you give him my email address, my phone number? Yes, I'd be happy to. Yes, sir? And so far we will find the thirty-five police departments to help them do this kind of thing. I'd like to meet you after lunch and see if you can get some funding out of helping. And Dave, I'm always up for lunch, so. It's a great idea. Uh, so Dave brings up something that's very important too. So I've already got a list of folks that have said they were, they wanted to help some kind of way. So I've been in touch already with the Williamson County Sheriff's Office. So I've got somebody, uh, that's helping us there, Heather Vargas, to be honest. Uh, I've got, uh, a judge here and is, she's a member of our club, Sarah Burgdollar. She wants to be a part of this, which I think is important as well. When you've got a judge that's sitting here and listening to all this and is a part of all of this, I think her, uh, take on things could be very, very important as well. So we're already starting a collaboration even with other clubs. Uh, and I love having community involvement, which is why I'm glad you guys showed up today. Yes, sir, again, I'm sorry, Jeanie?
Roger, um, what kind of programs are there in schools today that help to educate the kids about this?
That's a good question. Um, I'm not aware of any specific programs that address this, but, uh,
I can, I just say, there's, um, I can, I can speak to her, Tanya can. Um, so the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center is actively taking on lots of components of this work. A lot of it centered around what he's talking about, having healthy relationships, where safe dynamics. Anybody asking you for nude pictures, just trash. Um, and as a parent of children that do attend G I S D, we do get all of those, uh, information on what all those sessions are. And a big majority of them are, um, and Tanya, correct me if I'm wrong, they're, they're actually more in the hopped out category. It's a little bit more, we're bringing this information to start talking about healthy dynamics and, um, and that's been very well received. So we're blessed as a potential additional partner to include the Advocacy Center in some of this work. And I know Barbara's on the board, Tanya, and so I think you can make that connection. So children are being served, is what I want to be told. But again, to this point, it's a different kind of kiddo that they're going after. Yes, last question, by the way.
Thank you.
Two thousand nineteen, the eighty-six legislature tasked the Health and Human Services Commission to develop resources for education, for making, uh, special health care providers aware of signs of risk for human trafficking. Uh, we have a lot of resources to help the human services. I'm sure we'd be glad to share those with anyone who says that this might be a tactic to mitigate these risks.
That, that's excellent. Before you leave, if I could get your information. And just so everybody knows, I'm gonna be sitting over here at this table after the meeting ends. If you're interested in actually joining the committee, please come by and see me. I don't want somebody who says, well, I'm just interested. I want somebody who's going to be active and help me out, because I need the help. I can't do this alone. So thank you all very much, I appreciate the time.
Rogers, it's more than admirable work. And whatever needle we can move on it is a needle in the right direction. For those joining us today, it's customary that our program presenter assigns a book that we proudly donate to the library at Coral Elementary. And so, uh, Roger, today, the book being presented to you is Goose Egg by Liz Wong. So if you please jot a note of encouragement to a lucky elementary kiddo that's reading that, tell them to stay safe in your notes and we would, we would appreciate that. So again, thank you, Roger. We're gonna, we'll go to the next slide and then by that, uh, if you wanna go ahead and come up here with Ron. Oh, go back to the calendar. We got a busy calendar, folks, we got a lot happening. Ryla, stand up, let me show, show them that awesome Ryla Camp t-shirt. Tom, I see you right there, look at that. Rockin' it, Ryla twenty-two. I love that, I mean, one of those t-shirts. Ration Unity, you've got a phenomenal program planned next week on July twenty-second. Ramp Build, July twenty-third, seven-thirty a.m. Paul Harris is coming up on the twenty-ninth. We've got our first club social on the books. Scratch Six Twenty Kitchen is the tentative location to be set. We just have to get the patio. They don't get the patio, we're going to wrench, folks, so it'll be a good time no matter what we do. Field of Honor Beneficiary, their request for consideration closes on the twenty-ninth. So please get all the nonprofits out there that are serving military veteran first responders. It's a quick link, get it. We wanna get this committee wrapped up so we can name our beneficiaries from the field. And then don't forget, August fifth and sixth is our multi-district training institute. It's gonna be in Flugerville, the cost is one thirty-five. Check out the district website to learn more. And they said being president would not take much time. Go to the next slide. Okay, so Lisa's gonna come up and do our Minute for Peace and then we have two announcements right after that. I thought the slides were gonna be over. So we're gonna do the Minute for Peace and then your announcements. Yes, you just hang tight. And look, it's Lisa, not Julian, but the Grant family is represented well today.
Our Minute for Peace today is by Rabbi Lord Jonathan Sacks. For though my faith is not yours and your faith is not mine, if we are each free to light our own flame, together we can banish some of the darkness of the world.
And we've got two announcements for the good of Rotary. Ron?
Thank you, President Cat. I actually approached her today and said I had one thing I wanted to share. But as a result of Roger's program, I really have two things I wanna share. And I'll share the most disheartening one first. It was my privilege on Tuesday morning to listen to an employee of Texas Parks and Wildlife who commands a force of eighty people. And their current function as state police is being on the border. Being on the border as people are trying to cross the river. And I simply wanna share a fact with you, and Roger alluded to this in a certain sense. Just in the McAllen area in their zone, they are dealing with between six hundred and one thousand people a day. Part of that though is cartels who are receiving up to three thousand dollars for each of those people. And what Roger pointed out today, once they do get across and do get distributed, dollars are still expected. If you take those numbers and you multiply it by six hundred or a thousand in only that zone, you realize the economic challenge that's being presented. That's, I was amazed. And I was amazed first that we've had to employ and use Parks and Wildlife people to help assist in that effort. Now, the other thing I'll do, I wanna say thank you. It's been hot this week. And we've been asked for water once a week. And we've been asked to watch our thermostats and our electricity. And I wanna say to the citizens of Georgetown, as a member of the city council, thank you. We avoided the electricity demand outstretching the resource to provide it. And we've avoided having to go to the next stage on water. And it's because people have listened and behavior has changed. And they say, we want to do the right thing. So thank you.
All right, mine's real quick. Starting a brand new year of Rotary, and I just wanted to read this little reminder of why our service matters. It was one of my verses of the day and I've been carrying this around, so I could share it. When we give our time and energy to a cause or a person, we feel a special kind of fulfillment. It's great to know we are making a positive difference. Serving brings greater meaning to our life. It's an affirmation of spiritual affluence that extends beyond ourselves. Our talents are put to even greater use when we share them. We serve with no expectation of recognition or reward. Just knowing that our efforts and energies are helping those who receive them fills us with peace, contentment, and a fuller experience of God. The more we share the work of our hands and the love of our hearts, the more our joy grows, sending ripples of blessings into the world. Why good stewards of the manifold's grace of God, serve one another with whatever gift each of you has received.
Uh, one final update and, uh, thank you both, Ron and Michelle. Michelle, I'm always up for somebody that's got a good reminder of how we should live and lead. Thank you. And Ron, my lawn mower man doesn't appreciate it, but I have no problem with the brown yard. Makes my weekends a lot less full of work, so thank you. Stick it to my HOA. Guards Brown, no water. There we go, don't have to mow it. Okay, so, uh, final note, and it is one that will cause us all pause. Um, as you do recall, Billy Wright did give us an update on our dear friend and Rotary Nelson. Uh, he was found. Nelson's still in the hospital. Sadly, he's not making steps towards the better. Uh, so please, if, if he's a dear friend of yours, much like he is mine and all the comments he shared, um, please hold him very close to your thoughts and prayers. Um, he's such a likeness club and, uh, it's one of those things that maybe the spirit and energy of Rotary can come around him right now. Maybe he'll have a little smile known that we're thinking of him. So please keep Nelson in your thoughts and prayers for me. I appreciate that. Thank you. On that note, if you would please stand and join me for the four-way test of the things we think, say, and do. First. Second. Third. Fourth. And, and fifth. Roger, thank you very much. Have a wonderful week.